How about we get this meeting started? May I have the roll call, please?
Boyd?
Here.
Goldbeck? Halagian?
Here.
Hatwick?
Here.
McNary?
Here.
Roper? Simmons?
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Item number two, we have the meeting minutes, we have two minutes to approve. Both for April and May, we should probably take them separately. So first, were there any corrections to be made to April's meeting minutes?
No.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? April's meeting minutes are approved. And then for item two B, the May meeting minutes? Any comments or corrections on May? Let's entertain a motion.
See who was present on the May one, real quick.
Does anyone remember from that far back?
Yeah. It looks like we had... That was the one where it was not present.
We were shy at Quorum.
Yeah. That was Patrick, Robin, Paul, Ron. Can vote on it. It'll be approved.
With Robin not here, are we...
For the sake of consistency, we could trail this item, hoping that Robin...
Robin will come in? Okay, with Robin, then we'll have it.
Yeah.
So we'll leave that one on the table. Onto item number three, approving the agenda, is there any corrections to the agenda? No? Entertain a motion?
All motions approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's approved. There are no items on the consent calendar, no continued matters. Onto commission items A, please.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this matter.
So, item A. With this item, we're recommending that the commission review and comments on the pre-application consisting of conceptual adaptive reuse plans for the Elia Home Historic Property Number 311, located at 634 through 640 Van Ness Avenue. And the purpose of this review and comment is to initiate discussion and to provide advisement before moving forward in preparation for a proposed project. Review of a pre-application is not a formal project review, cannot result in an approval or denial, and may not be relied upon by an applicant for any purpose other than obtaining generally applicable information about the historic review process. The following is what the applicant submitted, the property owner. First, we have some current photographs, and here is overview of the facade, followed by additional photographs noting the side, a south yard, as well as the rear portion of the property, and the north elevation of the property. And here is the primary rendering for the proposed project from the property owner. And essentially, the property owner is envisioning a conversion of the first floor of the residential building to a bar and the second floor to offices. And these conceptual plans entail an extension of the front porch, as well as installation of a trellis along the side or south elevation, alterations to the rear elevation, including construction of a deck and installation of a roll-up glass garage door, as well as interior rearrangements to accommodate the new proposed uses. So here is a site plan noting that extension of the front porch and the trellis. The applicant has also submitted an existing site plan, a conceptual site plan, a rendering of the rear portion of the property, and a lower, a floor plan for the first floor. The applicant additionally submitted some conceptual images, some images that inspire what they would like to adapt the property to. So essentially, a garden party atmosphere, one that is light and open and very green. These are, there's some additional documentation that the applicant submitted after posting, and here's a written summary of what they're wanting to do and why they're wanting to do it, and some of their concerns, which I feel they're probably gonna discuss once they come forward. In addition to another, another concept, another idea for the front portion of the property, which is what's gonna be staff's primary concern and what we would like to encourage the commission to discuss further tonight as a focus. Staff would perhaps like us to come back to this original proposal and try to work from here to determine what will be an appropriate use of that front yard space that is not going to detract from the historic character of the property. So upon initial review of the pre-application, we found that the facade of the residential building and its setback are the primary concerns, as they are character-defining features of the historic resources that are readily visible from the public right-of-way. Staff encourages discussion in pursuit of an optimal design for use of the front and side or south yards that enhances and minimizes any potential adverse effects to the historic character of the property. There may be some considerable alternatives to essentially extending the first-story porch across the front yard while maintaining an element of spatial differentiation, such as fencing or landscaping. For example, with a ramp installed for access to the south end of the porch, a deck could be extended from the base of the porch out toward the sidewalk, which would still provide for an elevated platform as the front yard slopes downward toward the street, but not rise quite as high as the one being proposed. Or the front yard could be terraced up to the base of the porch, or the front yard could be flattened. The intention of the pre-application is to obtain advice and guidance on retaining a sense of place for this historic resource while considering adaptation and innovation for present and future needs, and to gain a consensus on what is recommended, what is likely to be permissible, and what may require further discussion. Here are some additional images. These are sourced from Dan, who made a trip to Charleston recently. Here is he found in...
Just for this purpose, too.
Yeah, just as past week he went, right? Just to get creative juices flowing. So he found this example to be particularly similar to the residential property we're looking at, and here is an example where these property owners repurposed the front yard of the residence for outdoor dining and maintained the ground level while still creating a spatial differentiator with fencing. Just one example. I think that's all I had. So...
It's not at that place, but elsewhere, yeah.
So again, it's probably...
I think we caught all the models and stuff, but for Robin, could you go back through and make sure we, I think maybe the site plan?
Site plan.
I think you caught everything except for that slide. That one, maybe one before.
Is that helpful?
Yeah.
That was in the packet. Is that the same?
Yeah.
Do you have the photos that were in the packet, too? Some of the, from the building write-up on the initial, let's see... The primary record?
I have a printout of it, I don't have the...
Only reason why I ask is there's a, there's a picture in there...
But here are existing photos.
There's a picture in there where there, you know, the adjacent lot that's vacant right now had a building in it, you can see it back there. It's the bottom picture. And so, as far as the side yard is concerned, I wonder if, you know, it accesses a frontage or not, based on kind of some of the evidence of the homes that were kind of slammed up next to it.
Which side yard, the south or the north?
The south.
It acts as a frontage?
Yeah, yeah. Or acts as a frontage to a certain point, I would say. Right now...
Does it help to look at the site plan for that? So it's a vacant lot, just to the south of it, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been vacant, I think, since the nineties, I'd like to say, but there used to be a, there used to be a home there, at one point.
Yeah, I think all of this, at least this side of Van Ness, used to be residential properties.
The location of that glass garage door, the slide of garage door?
Where is that being proposed?
Yeah.
That's for the, you can sort of see it in this rear, this is a rendering of the rear portion of the property, and here is where they would propose that garage door.
Yeah, looking at the photos of the rear, too, you can tell that there were steps at one point that led up to the upper-level door and kind of a balcony. Oh, was that a summer porch?
That was an add-on.
An add-on?
Would you, would you like the applicant to come up?
Just a minute, we'll see if there's any other questions for staff. If there are none, I guess we might ask the...
Can I just ask, Laura, do you know the distance from the building to the actual property line? Does anybody know that?
All right, come on up.
You guys sure?
Yeah, come on up, please. I'm just getting through a little bit faster here. Hi, Philip Cleaver, owner of the house. Yeah, it's eleven feet on the south side, and then it's about the same on the north side, from the duplex to the property line. That stair to the second floor, that second floor door was actually added at some point, there used to be a sleeping deck, you know, and so they enclosed that, they actually still have the siding inside that, inside that room on the second floor. It's our intention not to put that stair back in, if possible. We don't think it really adds anything, and it's not necessarily, when we had our pre-application meeting with the city and the fire department, they said that the square footage might be low enough to not require that to go back in. And if we did add it back in, it'd probably be preferable on the, probably on the north side of the building, you know, which is kind of a back-of-house type of area behind that storefront. That storefront door in the back was actually added. You can see it in the rendering right there. So there is a pass-through from the backyard to the front of the storefront at this point, too. Can I talk about, a little bit about our concept and why we're designing it to the way we are? I know we, there was a request by Laura to write up a, kind of a vision statement of why we're doing what we're doing. Can you go to that last rendering? So this one right here, you know, right now, if you go past the building, right now there's a fence out front, and that fence really isn't optimal, like, that's kind of a temporary thing in our opinion, but it's necessary because of the security of the site. We wish it was like downtown Charleston, you know, or it's a walking neighborhood, but it's not. It's, we got, we're bordered by two dirt lots, there's a large population of people, you know, who aren't necessarily walking around looking for a place to, you know, visit, they're looking a place to hide out for the day. And so, right, you know, we've had two break-ins, you know, one just two weeks ago where someone ripped off some plywood and smashed a window in. So, security concerns are a big part, and we feel that elevating that deck up front would be something that's, you know, takes us a little bit off the street. I mean, there's been, I mean, I drive by it every single day, ever since we've had our security issues, and there's been countless times of people just sleeping on the streets or walking by. You know, it's, you know, across the street, we're, we have, we have parking lots, just parking lots, right, just for parking, and, you know, it's just, it's not, it's not Fulton. We wish it was. So, we feel elevating it a little bit, even just that, that mental elevation from it, is really something that's gonna help. And then also, it gets dang hot out front, like, super, super hot, and I like this trellis idea more so out front than on the side, because it's just, it's glaringly bright and hot out front in the day, like, you know, it's downtown Fresno in the summertime. We, we want this to be something that's during the day, and I actually feel like a trellis, something like this, would actually hide the building less than, say, a whole bunch of umbrellas. And we're talking, you know, this, this picture makes it look like there's this huge deck out front, but we're talking about like, ten feet, maybe. Like, this meeting, like, really, this might be something that we actually go onsite and look at, because we're not talking about some huge deck out front of it. I guess it's just my opinion, but what we're really hiding is just everything below the elevation of the front porch, which we're not talking about much, we're talking about eighteen inches. And so really, by putting this trellis out front, we'd be exposing more of the side of the building, coming north on Van Ness, and we would, taking that, I would really probably just get rid of the trellis on the side and put it in front, and maybe not even extend it all the way to the side of the, this is just a conceptual, but all the way to the side of the property line, probably put it closer to that edge of the fence. It's just that, without some kind of elevation and without some kind of shade up front, it just does not become a usable space for us, and so really, we'd probably just be going back to a fence that's covering, you know, the deck, the front, eighteen inches of that porch, just as much as this deck is. You know, we would definitely consider tiering down a bit from the deck, but like I said, we're talking about maybe ten feet, and then ADA accessibility starts to become an issue, it starts to become less of a usable space. Our main focus on this building is more of the backyard, but we would love to create some sort of presence with people out front of the building, to just start something in this part of downtown, and without making it like an attractive seating area, it's just not gonna happen. And so, I mean, we feel that we may be hiding the building a little bit with this trellis, but at the same time, it's like, is makeup hiding like a woman? Not necessarily, it's, it's just, we feel like it's enhancing the whole property. Like, it's, it's, maybe that's a terrible analogy. But we feel that, like, we're really trying to enhance the building and get more people to it, not necessarily detract from it. So, I mean, that's, you know, while we are making a few alterations to the building, more so, probably the biggest thing to the, to the building itself is that, that back roll-up door, for sure, but that's why we're trying to put it, we're putting that in the back more than anywhere else, and that's, you know, we're just trying to increase accessibility from the inside to the outside. You know, we really feel like that, we're, we're trying to not just, you know, we could just take this building and, you know, keep it residential and make it low-rent, you know, not put that much money into it, but we wanna make something that's, that's special for downtown, for this area downtown, to bring people there. In order to do so, we kind of have to feel, we feel like we kind of have to think a little bit outside the box on this, and that's really where we're, we're letting our dreams go wild and trying to not, you know, not just settle for, for keeping it the same as it was.
Since we got you up here, is there anything else you wanna comment on?
No, I mean, I'd love, if you guys have questions, I'd love to answer them, I'd love to have this be a discussion. If, I mean, I personally, I, there's a couple things that we're definitely not gonna do right now, it shows the storefront being covered by wood, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna keep the stucco, Art Deco-type, like, moldings on the front of the stucco storefront. This is all just kind of conceptual renderings, so that's definitely something that we're gonna keep.
If I could ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
The, the face of the home itself? Because you, you took my first question away about the little storefront building, so thanks for clarifying that. And then, is, is, are the materials or anything being changed on the front of the house, or is that just a dark color that, that you're showing in this rendering?
We're playing with colors, we're keeping all the siding the same, we're definitely not gonna do some rainbow mural on the side, we kind of just went crazy playing around with it. That's, we're, right now, it's just, it's just the same siding shown in like a burnt-red color, kind of a thing.
Sure if that was supposed to be brick or something?
No. You know, right now, the building's white, and it is, I mean, it, it's, it's so white that when you go up to it on a bright July or August day, it like, complete washes it out, it's just blindingly bright. And so we're looking to take, take the color and kind of tone it down a little bit, make it a little, especially, you know, it's a restaurant, so we're looking to make it a little bit more comfortable to the eye. It wasn't always white, you know, we actually took out, you know, I've taken some paint chips, and I think it was like aqua-blue at one time, I'm not sure exactly what the original color was, but, you know, I think at some point, they thought white looked great on this building, and really, what it, I think it actually detracts from, from what, you know, what it could look like by, by not accenting any of the features, and so we're gonna try to accent as many features as we can. Because this building, this isn't the Mewks home, there's not like all, a million little details all over the place, and so we have to like, kind of take the little detail that it does have and try to accentuate it, and I, you know, and we feel that color, adding color to something like this, personally, I think is, is, will only do, you know, do it its service. There's way too many white or beige or gray buildings around, and, you know, we really do wanna add something that's a little bit, bring it into the modern age when we, when we talk about color.
On the accessibility portion, with, you know, kind of all the availability with state interior architect, that you get some kind of leniency on, on certain, certain items, is it possible to kind of have that space go towards the back, so that way, you know, obviously, you want access to a building, customers and everything, but there's a, if, if it becomes something that is harder in the front to manage with ramps and you're losing space pretty quick, that just might be an area where, where with that long side in the back, you, you have an ability to position up to the decking in the back.
So we are doing roughly, if you wanna go to that, that, that other rendering? No, no, the one in the back. So, you can't really see it, but on the, on the, and we've actually updated this since, since, but on, I guess on the, on the south side, I guess this isn't, doesn't help at all, we do have kind of the same ramping up situation because of accessibility. So we're really ramping up from both sides up onto the deck, you know, we wanna make it, I wish I had like a laser pointer, like, we have, we have that ramp coming up, so, so really, the entry for the ADA would be coming up on that ramp to the, to the south for that deck, and then we'd be doing something similar going up to the deck on the other side.
Is that the narrow brown band along the south side of the house that we're seeing? That would be the ramp?
Yes, sir.
So you kind of go up along the side?
Yes, sir.
And then track back, got it?
Yes, sir. I don't think we actually get too much leniency for the first floor, since we're making it a residential, I mean, a restaurant, commercial space. If it was an office, I think we'd get more leniency, but at this point, we're not planning on any for ADA. And I was actually gonna contact the ADA person at the city to do a walkthrough with her.
Can beer?
Yes, before we finalize plans. But, you know, at this point, it's, we don't think that, I'm kind of planning to not do, try to, try to, you know, ask for any exceptions, because I don't want that to be any kind of issue down the road.
And thanks for putting it on the front, because oftentimes, when the ramps and accessibility are in the rear of the building, it really makes a person with a disability feel more like a second-class citizen. It's kind of the back-of-the-bus mentality.
I have a daughter...
Front and center.
Yeah. I have a da-
From a federal standpoint?
Put it right in front.
I have a daughter with a disability.
Front and back, now, yeah.
Yeah, access from, from the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have a daughter with a disability, I'm, I'm very aware of that and mindful of it, so, like, I, I want to, I don't want any part of this place, except maybe the second-floor office, to have any kind of prohibitive nature, like, that's really what pushes me away from doing like a tiered front system, is I don't want there to be a whole bunch of tiny little steps that preclude somebody from spending any time anywhere on this site.
One thing I was okay with on my own side about the trellises is, I was looking at those photos, and I saw that it wasn't a frontage at one point, and so it's kind of why I pointed it out.
Yeah.
Not only that, is a lot of times, the side yard on some of these buildings had, had covered awnings and things for, for parking needs and, to name it, access to the back.
Actually, I've seen a picture, there actually was one at one time, you, as you can see in the front picture, there's actually like a driveway ramp, that was where they parked, and so I, I've seen a picture somewhere of a little lean-to carport that must have been taken down at some point. There's still some old rail, rail, railway ties out there that are, I think, used to have supports on them. One of the only, one of the only conditions that we had with the pre-application with the city was that we were gonna have to take that driveway out when we do, when we do, when I, when we change, when we change this project, or the, when we change it to commercial property rather than residential. So there's gonna be, there's gonna definitely have to be some grading because of ADA going up to that side yard. We're gonna have to, it's just gonna be one of those things that we have to deal with. I mean, we have, you know, we're having to kind of balance visual, you know, appeal of this project from the outside with keeping it as historically pristine or whatever, you know, as well as, you know, so, it needs to be attractive for somebody to come to a restaurant. It also needs to be, you know, we, we need to maintain some visualness of the historical aspects, and we're conscious of that, but then also, the, the other big concern and the reason we're designing it a lot of the ways we are is just security. Security is a huge, huge issue on this site, you know, this, there's been, there's been countless instances of, of, of why we're doing what we need to do. I think we, we installed a whole bunch of security lights last weekend, we installed this fence soon after we, we purchased the place, you know, there wasn't a single time I would come up to here where there wasn't someone sleeping on the porch. We know that's gonna be an issue, and we wanted to design it to where it's, we're not putting up barbed wire fences or even, you know, ride iron fences with curved spikes, or, you know, people, yeah, everyone wants to do that, I don't wanna do that, I wanna, I think there's a way to do this to where it's, it doesn't look like it's secure, but it really is. You know, and it's really just about not making your, it, it's making your property something that's easy to, to sleep in, or, you know, it's, it's, we can use gates and we can use low fences, nobody, even if it's a low fence, people don't wanna feel like they're trespassing, and so if we have low gates and low fences, I mean, and landscaping and, and stuff like that, we can, we can try our best to, to keep as much of this building visual as possible from the street. But it's definitely gonna be, you know, and so, you know, doing a little raised deck, it's like, yeah, it's raised, and you might not see that bottom eighteen inches, but we're, you know, we're trying to make it transparent enough, like, you saw that rendering where even the railing's transparent, where you can see through as much as possible. Like, you saw that rendering where, where even the railing's transparent, where you can see through as much as possible, you know, as much as the front of the building. This is, that front fence right now is worse than this, because at least there's some transparency to that front deck. You know, and that, that last rendering, I think, is even better than, I think it's even lower of a fence and like, there's just some like plants and stuff like that to where it's, it just starts to really, I don't know, I like it like that personally, but I, I think it's better than just a fence. I think it's, I think having people out front, you know, like actually experiencing this building, you know, they might not see that bottom eighteen inches, but at least they're there looking, you know, being a part of this thing. It's a hundred-year-old building. I think it's, it's, it's a good trade-off.
It appears that your trellis too isn't attached to the actual, uh, fabric of the building. It's, it's sort of, uh, offset.
I wanna hold it back a little bit, so even when you're underneath, you can, you can see all the way up, you know, this, this kinda shows it really far up. I think we'd even bring it back a little bit, um, probably, you know, from the front of the building. So when you're underneath it, you can see the whole, you know, you're not, we're not leaning against it or attaching anything to it. You'll, you'll be able to, you know, standing at the steps or where the steps used to be, you'll be able to see all the way up for sure, and all the way down.
One of the things that we often see on historic properties is like kind of a backpack concept. And so you leave the front facade as historically, you know, accurate as possible. And then you put on this uber, you know, you put on essentially a backpack and that handles all the new amenities needed to kind of make the building nice and, nice and clean and kind of work for modern applications. So this is kinda like a front pack.
Yeah, totally.
That we're looking at.
It's a fanny pack.
Exactly.
Yeah, no.
So we kinda have that concept here. The, um, the, the, the backpacks that I think really work well are ones that are not trying to match the building. So they look like, it's like, it's like, if you, if you have an old building, it's like a crazy modern design. So you can see a clear definition of what was the old building and what is, is the new part. That might work well in this application here. So your lines for your railings and your lines for your trellis and, you know, shade sails or anything else like that are thinner and cleaner, and you can see a definite, it's almost like you've got this modern, you've got, you've got the old building coming out of this little modern wrap here. And like you said, uh, we're kind of alluded to, I think making sure that we keep everything separate, like as far as the actual construction of it, so that at any given time, if it, if, if a new owner or, or new occupant or whoever wants to return it to original, it's literally a demolition item and it can be fully restored. I don't have any problems with anything you wanna do in the back. Normally, I think we would err to leave the front pristine, do what you want with the back. And to some degree, even the sides. Um, but you don't have any neighbors right now, so your sides are wide open to kind of visual access, which makes it a little bit different. Um, so I think it typically, typically, it's this one, you know, with all the, I think, I like the idea of what you're trying to accomplish at front. I think there's a solution here. That's a little hard to swallow because it's, it's a lot different than what we normally see. Normally, this stuff kinda gets hidden in the backyard, not necessarily in the, in the front.
Yeah, I'm, I don't like hiding stuff. I mean, personally, like, we're definitely doing a backpack. The, the backyard's gonna be amazing. It's gonna be fantastic. The backyard's gonna be the highlight. But I just lo-, I don't, I, I hate the idea of, of hiding the front out front, you know what I'm saying? It's just, there, there just won't be anybody out there if we don't do something other than, you know, what's done now. It's, it's such a small space in front of that porch, that if we don't do this, we're talking, it's, it's, it's a little pit of, of rock. We're not, we're talking, it's just not gonna be used. Nobody's gonna rent it. This, you could have a party out here. You could have, you could have people out front, you know, renting that space for private parties. Or you, you know, if, if, you know, God willing, this thing becomes a success, like, it's an overflow. It's whatever, you know, it's, people, you know, maybe someday, this is what brings more development to this corner of downtown. We kinda have, like, we're, we're kind of like shooting for the stars on this. We, and we know that. And I, 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 I came here half-expecting for this all to be shot down, but I, I mean, I don't want it to be. Like, I think this looks amazing.
We can't, we can't really, we can't deny that the, the value of the use of this space. What we, what we're looking at, what this body's looking at is, is the architecture and the facade. So we kinda have to, while all those, all those comments are good and right and, you know, and, and a good idea, we're looking at it from the architectural perspective. So the solutions here, you know, kind of, you know, this is, if this, if, if, if your desire is to put this space out here, you know, our concern is that the solution is going to be respectful of the original building and the architecture, and it's not gonna detract from the building from the public's perspective. Not so much the validity of having a seating spot out front. I think, I think we all get that.
I think this genesis is kind of working its way towards something that we could work with from, from that first one, that was, you know, kind of the big block in the front. I think, um, personally, I think that some, some more careful detailing will help. And I'm not convinced that, that the entrance straight shot up is, is the only answer. I don't know, I just might encourage you to explore, you probably have, other ways to get in the building, either from, you know, coming along the frontage or something else. Um, I like the trellis out there, and I know this is schematic. I just might think about a little different detailing that sort of honors that, that original architecture.
So you have two comments there. My comment, which is push it more modern, and Robyn's, which is get it closer to the building. And you can kinda go two different directions, and both make sense. Both, both would work.
I guess what I don't understand is it'd be nice if, is there some clarity that I can have is, is like, would this be rejected if I submitted this for approval? Like, that's the kinda, like, and what could I change about this to have it not be rejected? Some clarity. I mean, we've played with a lot of different layouts. Like I said, this looks, this looks different on picture than, than, than if you took this and you actually went to the front of the building, you'd realize that this is actually a very small space out front. It looks huge from right here. I mean, it does to me. There's not a lot, because of the slope of the property coming from the sidewalk, as well as this actual space from the sidewalk to the front porch, we're not talking about a lot of space and we're talking about quite a bit of elevation difference. So, you know, it's, there's only so much we can do playing with ramps and stairs. We've played with doing them right out front, you know, kind of a thing where it comes up, you know, to the side and then goes up. You know, actually having a, a uniform fence, what, whether it looks like this or something else or not, with a deck up, that actually looks personally a lot better than having a ramp, visual ramp right out in front of the building. Having that ramp a little bit hidden on the sides doesn't, I, I think it detracts less. This frames the building, I think, a little bit better, and that's just, I guess that's a personal preference, just playing with the layouts and actually visualizing it on the street, you know, kind of a thing. Um, that's to, that's how we got to this. We're not married to this. We're not married to doing a trellis out front or even a deck out front. But, um, and really, this is probably secondary to everything else that we're doing in the backpack in the back. And so it's great that you guys like the backpack, I think, um, and are okay with the roll-up door, I think.
We don't really have jurisdiction there.
Yeah, I think that's one of the.
I guess that's a good, what I'm confused about.
How, how deep is, is the original front porch?
How deep? From the street?
From the street. I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that maybe you could put, if it's deep enough, you could put, uh, bistro tables on the front porch and have intimate seating on the front porch without the trellis and.
It's about six feet. Um, you could probably fit a one or two tables without impeding traffic, possibly.
You know, ideally, we'd like the facade to stay the same.
Good.
Without an added deck, and I thought if, if, if you could just have something on the front porch, you know, three or four tables to have, you know, intimate seating on the front porch, it may work just as well as, as a deck rather than, and put the large seating in the back.
We could. There's just not very much space. That storefront actually impedes into the, the porch about a quarter of the way. So we're talking about maybe eighteen feet by six feet, if that, maybe twenty feet on by six feet. And it's just because of those two doors that are right there. There's two separate entrances, one to the second floor, one to the first floor. You're talking about placing one or two tables and it just kinda becomes this little lone. It's one of those lonely little, you put a couple of people out front, and then there's, you know, people walking by and it's just kind of a little lonely, scary little thing out front to where I don't, I personally wouldn't wanna sit there out there by myself. So this, I mean, it, we would probably end up doing that if this wasn't allowed, if we were not allowed to do that. But it's definitely not something that's gonna become some kind of big usable space at that point. It'll just, I'll, probably we'll just end up doing a whole bunch of landscaping.
Kinda clear up the confusion on the, uh, the, the rear is, um, uh, backpacking ideas. We can't, we don't really do, we really don't have jurisdiction in there since it's, it's not a public space. So that's why a lot of historic, uh, homes did additions in the back and, and they had a kind of free rein of, of what that was. It depended on the context too. I mean, um, you know, uh, we, we do have historic homes where the rear does have an alley or, or something else where there is, there is a public view. So, um, I think in this particular scenario, the, the back is pretty much free rein when it comes to some of that stuff.
That's great, and that's fantastic. Um, and I, that's kind of the way we're proceeding, although we are trying to keep it somewhat vintage. You know, kind of a, an atmosphere. We're not trying to take this and make it a new age thing, you know. We're definitely gonna have, you know, stuff that's gonna be modern just for, because it's, you know, it's the times.
We do also have options here to create subcommittees. So, um, the, we've been able to create a subcommittee when we had some, um, uh, some interesting projects. Came up like Caltrans Bridge or whatever, where the, the context was, uh, presented, uh, far off from, from the input that we were giving. And so, um, there was the ability to kinda work through those in a, you know, more of a tight group, one-on-one setting, for guidance and for, for helping kind of connect the thoughts of the, uh, what the commission can kind of all agree on, but to give the, the owners some additional like, uh, help in, in that. And so I think that might be, um, an area that's valuable on something like this, cause it's unique and again. It's, like you said, not before, it's not full to mall. It's not, it's not in a, a neighborhood where there's a bunch of homes and buildings around it. It's, it's a very unique scenario, and I think, um, a subcommittee could be an, an option. Uh, that would be very helpful.
We'd be open to that, absolutely.
And I, um, sorry, as well, and, and this is all prefaced, I just spent nine days in what I call the land of adaptive reuse. Columbia, South Carolina, Augusta, Georgia, Greenville, South Carolina, uh, which all build themselves as not Charleston. Older buildings, older buildings, less fear. Uh, and, and so I like what you did here. And I, I ate in a restaurant called The Trellis, which is in a revolutionary era, um, house, surrounded by a trellis on all four sides. That does, that don't attach to the house, but gave lots of eating and drinking space, the whole rear of the house. I'm pretty sure they cornered all of the pull-up glass garage doors are all in Columbia, South Carolina. I mean, it's, I've never seen so many in that era house. I mean, I ate in, I, many of them. Um, well, I drank in more of them.
I nominate you to be part of the subcommittee.
This, what you're doing here, you know, I, I agree with Patrick. I think you could go further, you can go more modern with those trellises and the design of that. I like the front porch, you know, so much of what they're doing in these places is, is front yard, uh, inviting people to walk in and short, you know, we usually went through a gate for them because of, of the same urban issues that we have here. But also, these are hot places. I mean, Columbia's nickname is Hot City. And it's hot there with the, with humidity. And so sitting under trellises with sprayers was a different experience than, than sitting under a sprayer here. I mean, uh, and that's, I like that. I like coming out on the Van S. Like, you can go around the site. I'm surprised you didn't do something behind the pop-out, um, building the addition on the front on that side, because I thought you could extend your backyard space over there as well, and that way you're facing the galleries.
There's, there's a good chance, well, that's a dirt lot on that side as well. There's a good chance that back area behind that storefront will all become more back-of-house type stuff. You know, right now, because it's a restaurant, we have to put stuff like restrooms, you know, for, for public. And so that might be a primary candidate to hide them back there behind that. If not, there possibly an extension of, right now, we're looking at turning that storefront into a commercial kitchen for, for the restaurant with possible access from the front. So that side yard, while I do like, I love the idea of putting people back there. If we did put people back there, it might be at a second-floor elevation type height, kind of a deal.
But, uh, as, as for me, I, you know, what you presented here, um, you know, I think, go for it. Go further. Uh, the, the design of the trellis and the fence could be, um, significant, you know, in themselves from another era. Uh, and, uh, and it's just because I've recently seen so much of that that pulled 2020 thinking on, um, early eighteen-hundred houses. That, um, kind of blew my mind and I, I can't, can't see them enough, and really, really wish we had more of that here.
There's none of this in Fresno, for the record.
Talk about pull-up glass doors and an entire industrial area of cotton mills turned into breweries. And if I liked beer better, I would've been in heaven, but, um, lots of, lots of them. And they, and there actually is a little sign that says, "We're not Charleston." Because, you know, it said, you can't use many, I'm, I'm from Charleston, and you literally actually can't use many of the buildings because of, you know, of the fear that we'll damage the historic property. And that's what makes people go and look at it, but it also keeps people who live there from having a great bar next door, from having a business in their neighborhood that they can walk to. You know, my, my mother, you know, lives, lives in Hazelton, you know, a, a historic district in, and, you know, she's ninety. She calls it Damn Hazelton, uh, because she has to go so far out of it to get to a grocery store. And the district is perfect. It's picture-perfect unless you live there. And, um, and, and so it's just, Columbia said, "We won't do that." And so adaptive reuse with, and houses just like this are, are surrounded is with their shops in the front yard and their eating and not just on the, the porch itself, you know, when I eat in, it's called the back porch, which started as a back porch, but it just kept going and going and going every, with the porch feel. So I think you can get there. I was thinking about Robyn's in Cambria. Some of you have been there, how their outdoor area has more dining than their indoor area. And you'd actually prefer to eat outside, and it's trellised and, you know, it almost feels like you're sitting under a garage, um, you know, awning in, in part of it. But I, I'm really, really excited about what you presented here and look forward to having something like what, what you're showing in downtown that people can walk to and walk into from the street. And when they're at Art Hop, it's easy to get in, in and out of there from those, those galleries next door.
This reminds me of Rainy Street a little bit in Austin.
That's what we're going for. We're totally going for Rainy Street.
I didn't spend nine days there.
What I love about Rainy Street is even though their buildings are painted, you know, like blue or some eccentric thing, it brings you to the historical context because it's familiar and not familiar and it draws you in. So, um, I do love adaptive reuse, you know, obviously there's a, a, a way to do it where, uh, the old and the new have a distinct, uh, distinction of each. So, you're drawn into, uh, getting people to, to understand what the original fabric was. But, um, I love the idea of, uh, front yard usability because of Rainy Street and I've been there a lot and I love it.
This, so this is, uh, this is, Rainy Street is a big inspiration for exactly this. I mean, as well as countless other peo- places across California even, you know? You go to any city in California, you know, where, Sacramento or Cambria, I was there two weeks. Where, you know, whatever, say, whatever, they have houses like this that are used, you know, for commercial restaurants or, or eating places or stores. We don't really have a lot of that in Fresno. We have that in Clovis. A lot, there's a lot of that in downtown Clovis. It's great, you know? But not in Fresno and not this part of Fresno. And we're trying to take the old and preserve it. Like, we're not gonna change a single thing on the columns or even the railings. We might have to raise them a little bit for, for safety, but it's gonna look exactly the same. Um, but we're just gonna kind of add on to, you know, up, right up to it, kind of a thing, you know? We're not gonna, we're not gonna change the house, but we're gonna make it more comfortable for people, lots of people to be at, you know? Usable space that draws people in from the front to the back, not just to the, straight to the backyard. Let's start up front. That's the entrance, the, from the sidewalk in, the sidewalk is the entrance, not the front door. And so, that's really what we're going for here, you know? I love Rainy Street. I think that's the best, you know, having people all over, you know? We can have a band out front on that deck. That'd be fantastic. You know, let's make some noise in downtown Fresno. We can, so why not?
So, you pro, front yard design?
I am not opposed to this.
Okay.
Um, and I'm, I'm hearing that we would be able to approve something different from the existing house if.
I'm just, I, I would just want to get a sense of where we are.
Yeah, I, I would clarify to the owner where we are.
Yeah, there's tweaks and stuff. But just about the idea of putting anything in the front yard.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I think it needs some tweaking. I think it needs.
You sound like you're pro.
Yeah, and, and specifically, mainly because there's nothing adjacent to it and it needs, it needs some lifting and, uh, it'd be different if it was just a neighborhood, you know?
Yeah.
We might have a different conversation, but I think in, in this instance, uh, I am super pro.
You're pro? Ron, pro? Ron, anti? How do you, how are you, what are you feeling on this one?
Well, I'm a restorationist, so I, I like to see things in its natural state. I'm, I'm not real happy with, with the raised, uh, deck all the way up to the street. The trellis, uh, I could, I could do a trellis if, if, if it was in keeping with the house. I, I, I'm not real fond about the idea of putting something completely separate, uh, looking. Because I'm a restorationist. I, I like to keep things as they are. The back, I think something could be done real, real elegantly in the back. And that's why I suggested maybe you could put, uh, a, a few tables on the front porch, the existing front porch. If you wanted some visual, something out front.
Yeah. Uh, uh, I would have to say that I'm kind of drawn towards the idea of, of putting a system up like this, um, as a solution. But I have a, I, I, I kind of, like, I think it's a good solution for many reasons. But I think it's a, it's a sensitive one because we are covering up so much of the front facade. So, I would say that, you know, for, you know, my vote would be to, you know, move forward with this, but there's, kind of like Robin was alluding to, there's a lot of like little details about putting it together. And I, I do think there's probably a solution going more modern and probably another solution going more preservation centric on, on a trellis in a, in a.
I've, I've been to New Orleans a lot and there's, there's old houses in the French Quarter that are made into restaurants and they have small seating area in front, but most of the houses in, in New Orleans have courtyards in the back where the restaurants would be. And I like that because the facade is old French Quarter norms. And I guess that's where I'm coming from. I've been to Charleston a few times myself and Beaufort, South Carolina. I don't know, I just, I just have a little trouble with covering up, covering up the facade of the house.
So, from what I'm hearing, there's openness to the design concept, the idea of making the front yard and side yard usable space. Are there any further, um, perhaps, design guidelines you'd like to provide the applicant with moving forward in their design process? For example, are you, how do you feel about the height of the front deck?
I think, uh, it looks really exaggerated in this, uh, this one. It's only about like, not even eighteen inches a drop. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, yeah, once it gets out the curve, maybe the height of the table, but.
You'd be able to see, if I'd be able to stand up and see over the top of that, that rail right there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the, right now, that fence right there is about four and a half feet up and you can see it's up, but probably about six inches from the sidewalk. And so, we're talking about maybe just a little bit higher than that, but more transparent.
Much lower step than, than what the render kind of perspective view.
Yeah.
If you go back to the rendering too, another trick that you can do.
It's such a small frontage.
It's so small.
One of the, kind of, one of the historic aspects of an old house like this is they always had, um, a sidewalk that wrapped around inside between the, between the foundation and the sidewalk. There was kind of a foundation planting. Outside that sidewalk was usually turf. Uh, and that's kind of the classic landscape of that. So, if you took the, that, kind of those kind of built wing walls on either side of the, of the deck there, pushed them in three feet and actually did foundation planting there, it would soften the weight of that whole deck. When you put something, even if it's just as simple as an evergreen hedge wrapping that side, it basically makes, it takes out the, the negative aspects of the new architecture and it leaves the old architecture of the building to take center stage still in the middle there. Because you're kind of covering up, you cover up the things you don't want to see with landscape with, and let the things you do want to see, the ar- the important pieces of architecture come to fruition.
Yeah, and you may be able to take the stairs on the, the, the left side and, and dish them if you have the right side be your primary access point. I mean, you could extend a, a fence or gate to, uh, to that right side to where that's the entry.
That's actually the intention of having a gate right there. So, when it's clo- when the, the hours are closed, it'd be closed.
I mean, I don't know if the fire access needs the stairs and stuff, but that's just, uh, just a thought.
We're not sure we need those stairs, you know, if we have the ramp on the right side anyways. So, I mean, there's a good chance that maybe those just go away and the, the fence is extended all the way to the, to the storefront. You know?
I think just maybe a little bit more, um, you know, kind of what Patrick's alluding to with landscaping, just a little relief of the massing along that front and that, and that corner.
So, you're saying those little rails on, in front of the porch, the two rails to the side of the stairs, having some landscaping in front of that? Is that what you mean?
I think you're saying along the perimeter of the fencing.
This is really heavy right here, right up against here. And so, you know, one of the, you know, between the other rendering that's all white and this one, the difference is, is that we've built right up against the back of.
Oh, have some relief.
Got it straight out. And what makes this one nicer is you've got this little planter box here. Well, just take the planter box and extend it all the way down. So, this, these two walls essentially squeeze in like this and this ends up being, you know, essentially a hedge.
Oh, I think it's a great idea.
And I even think you can play this off.
Railing a little bit here so it's less visible. You know, you do something with a trellis here, so again, it's just less visible. So, all these, all those, all this stuff disappears. So, it all turn, it turns green with landscape. Which essentially is like using a big eraser and then the building comes out.
I think we were matching the railing from the porch to that front railing. Is that better or is that worse to match that? Because you're not.
That was our discussion earlier, which way do you go?
Yeah, exactly.
Do you go, so you either, you either match it, you, so you either pull cues from the architecture of the original home and you pull that into the trellis.
Which is what we did.
And you pull that into, you know, these railings in here and you pull all that stuff together and you gotta be like spot on with all the little details up here and beveling things and all kinds of stuff and then matching up. Or you go the opposite direction and you go much more modern.
Got it.
And you maybe do, you know, maybe this is
Do hogwire.
Steel trellis, you know? And, and instead of having all the cross braces over the top, it's just, you know, big open beams with shade sails in there. This is, um, steel posts and maybe has cable.
I understand.
So, it's very open. It's very kind of, maybe has.
So, it differentiates from the house.
Yeah, even, even on the matching side, uh, it couldn't be the exact same railing typically because you want to be able to distinguish new construction versus old construction.
Okay.
So, the, the context of the original is still a hundred percent there.
And I think to me, the piece that makes the context of the original stand out is, you know, for instance, you've got, you've got some symmetry of this old building. And if you kind of massage how your planters are, how your wall is, to, to kind of pick that up, even though they might be, like you say, steel and cable materials. They might be completely new materials, but you sort of say, okay, we're gonna reflect this sort of symmetrical, more stately, um, form in a new way.
Okay. And all your answers are already given to you. You, you have this existing building. There's a rhythm to all the little elements of architecture as far as offsets and set, you know, offset and spacing and setbacks and all these different things. And so, you can really, literally take the, the math of the architecture, which is use those numbers and use them in different places. So, you can say.
You know, you've got the deep eve up on top. I think about somehow forming the trellis that sort of reflects that.
Yeah, all kinds of different things. You can take pull reference points from for, well, how, how far should this be set back? Let the building tell you and the site kind of tell you, the existing features tell you how far the new setback should be of the new element that you're developing.
So, what I'm hearing is this is generally okay. We just need to tweak some of the detailing on it.
This is on its way, is my feeling.
Yeah, I think it's got potential.
Yeah, okay. Because we're okay with, I mean, I'm okay with tweaking, obviously, but if we were gonna, if we, the, the whole thing, you know, obviously, I just didn't want to have to.
And I think, I think the commission is looking to honor that existing architecture.
And so are we.
Not necessarily to copy it.
Right.
But if we've chosen that, you know, preservation is, is a thing and that's why we're here and that's why we've got this opportunity for you that we then, um, we work with that, like Patrick says. The building has some keys that you can, you can use.
Do you think with that, uh, information, a subconcity, a, a subcommittee would even need to be performed at this point or you think that's still a, something? I don't know. I think, I think we'd all want to see it again.
Yeah.
So, it depends on what your confidence of what we're telling you and your designer's ability to kind of take that information and, and use it. Because we're kind of in the weeds on details here.
I mean, look.
It's a little, I mean, it's a, it's like a, a full-on critique.
And I don't know that it's our job to get into, even as a subcommittee, detailing that will have an effect on budget.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
I think our job is to give some general guidelines and then you, your designer, your budget, all of those are under your hat.
Well, the general guidelines that I'm getting from this right now is that this is generally okay. The, 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 the path we're proceeding down is generally okay and that, um, it would be, we just need to work on either matching the design elements, paying tribute to them, or going a completely separate direction. And, um, trying to, you know, but, but what we are actually trying to do, which is, you know, obviously, cover that front eighteen inch facade, i- i- while not ideal all the time, is gonna be acceptable in this instance. And we will do our best to work with you guys to make sure that the final design on this is, is close enough to, you know, to, to acceptable for everybody. Not, that doesn't, you know, on this committee or otherwise. I just don't want to design something like, keep going down this road. That's my whole concern, is keep going down this road and then have something be rejected before, you know, when we're ready to start pulling permits.
Well, this, I mean, as you pointed out, this is clearly different from what we're used to seeing, working, working through it. A question for staff though, those posts on the south side, on the south side of the driveway there, those things are pretty much, as, as they're said, they're pretty much right on the property line. Is that gonna be okay or is that a no-no?
No, that's no problem. This is downtown and you can build right up to the property line. So, the main consideration, if this was a vacant lot, you could do, uh, building that covered the whole thing, side to side, front to back. And so, the main consideration is the historic, um, in this case, and, and getting that right because the zoning doesn't provide any of those constraints.
So, I think that's to the zoning ordinance, Dan, that you're referring now to the building code. You can't go occupied space side to side. So, there, those.
Unless it's a raided wall and.
Exactly, without protection.
Yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm just speaking to the zoning, right.
Just, just to clarify as you're working on that, we're not, we're not saying go to the edge and, you know, build a wood wall and think you're good.
Yeah, and in other parts of the city, you know, it'd be a different story if this was in Wilson Island, you know, for example. Well, then there are side setbacks and those would come into play in addition to historic concerns. But in this particular setting, not so. We, we envision historic, you know, notwithstanding building shoulder to shoulder in a downtown urban kind of fashion. And so, yeah, setbacks wouldn't come into play.
If this was a residential neighborhood with other residences to the north and south of it, we would probably have made this a residence. Um, but because of where it's at, where there's no residential around the, the, you know, that area whatsoever, this, this commercial use just seems like the best fit for the property. I would love further to be more residential in this neighborhood and I would actually, if I have the, somehow get the opportunity to buy the property to the north or south of it, like, I would definitely do some type of residential mixed use kind of a, I think that's, it's perfect for the area. But, you know, that's not where we're at right now. And for this to be viable, that's why we're going commercial on this one.
Look forward to seeing the next, next version. This is cool.
Is there anything you guys need to see on the inside or is the inside really not having, doesn't really matter? It's gonna, the space is gonna be opened up, but we're, we're gonna try to keep it to the house aesthetic on the inside. Probably a little funkier, but still house.
It's not often the interior side comes up unless there's some major grand staircase or something in there that is, uh.
Unless it's public.
Yeah, unless it's public, you know, carhouse, yeah, I kind of.
Staff and commissioner available if you need, if you would like guidance on it, um, but, um, you are not required.
Well, I said, I included that floor plan. So, I mean, if you guys had any comments, you know, let me know. Obviously, you know, we're really, I try to include just the outside stuff, but, you know, we have to keep a couple of the, the walls and columns and stuff for sheer, for, 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 for engineering purposes. But for the most part, on the first floor, we're opening up the space. But for the most part, on the first floor, we're opening up the space. Oh, there was this, there is the, we're, we're talking about doing those skylights on the back roof. I know that was something that, that's visible from the back. It really would only be visible from certain angles in the alley because of the tree and the location. But is there any issues with putting skylights in there for the second floor office space? We kinda wanna do some kind of like light well type thing, where we're, we're showing the structure of the, of the, yeah, kinda like that bottom left kind of a deal, something like that. In the, in what was the kitchen slash sleeping deck. Now it's a conference room slash kitchen.
It is loads of flexibility inside, loads of flexibility in the back, do whatever you want, for the most part. The facades are really kind of the focal point.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Helpful, Philip?
Yeah, very helpful. So glad you guys, for the most part, liked it.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we'll keep, we'll keep trudging along. We're in the middle of a kind of, you know, design, we have our structural engineer, Michael Yunt, who's working on this right now with us. So kinda just trudging along slowly, one thing after another, and this is part of it, so. Yeah, hopefully in a year or so, maybe this'll be up and running, hopefully. I won't hold my breath.
Philip, I'll provide a letter for you, kinda summarizing what was said today, and then we'll also provide you with a copy of the minutes, in case you need to refer to them as you're moving forward in your design process.
Okay, great, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Oh, you wanna get, oh yeah, Paul. Paul.
Probably sleeping out there.
Yeah. Not hostile. Back East City, so you're left Austin.
Left Austin.
Can you go home?
He's coming. Morgan, Portland. Seattle, Portland.
I do have more renderings on paper, if anyone wants to see any more after the meeting. All right, let's move on to item B, trolley car.
So predominantly, the city attorney office has been working hard on moving forward with efforts and taking care of our trolley cars. And I've been getting acquainted with this project as well. I think John will have some good details to share on the most current status of those efforts.
Sure. Are there any images that go along with this, or?
Um, I did not.
Do you mind if I hit the lights then, so we don't all fall asleep? It's getting too cozy in here.
I can pull up.
Maybe we could pull up something just to have a, have some sort of visual. I, I feel like I have to come up with too much if it's just that, but I'm sure everyone on the commission is familiar with the trolley cars at seventeen thirty-one South Cherry. And I don't know how much you're familiar with the backstory, but it's gone through a bunch of iterations, and they're currently affixed to the property. Because I believe the most recent actual use was a restaurant. I don't think that, I think that the general feeling is that there is not really any historic value to the property itself, but just to the cars. And so what we've been working on and working with staff is to see what we can do to preserve them, whether that be by, you know, taking, taking the property back, or getting it sold in some manner, or also the notion of maybe even being able to get the cars located to another place. And I think that there've been kind of, the ways of doing that, one, we've been attaching all sorts of nuisance liens and that sort of thing, which we now believe probably exceed the market value of the property. The current owner, we believe, purchased it at an online auction for some very low price. I think it kind of escaped notice of folks several, several years ago, Dan?
It's been a while.
Yeah, and has not really undertaken any serious efforts to even do the most basic of maintenance. This individual, I, I believe probably has some personal or family problems, and is not paying attention to the property at all. We believe she might be located in Southeast Asia right now, and that's presented some issues of just trying to get service of process on her, so that we can initiate steps to take it back. So we're, as far as taking back the property, there are kind of, there's, there's a tax lien process, so we've attached these particular liens, but they would only be, that will only allow us to, to get the property back if the county would move forward with a tax sale. And for whatever reason, and if anybody here is interested in mobilizing an effort with the board of supervisors, that would be wonderful. But the, the county council and the county generally does not seem to be very interested in pursuing tax sales on these sorts of properties. I don't know if it's because they don't think they're gonna recoup the lot, but after a, a property is severely delinquent, the code kind of contemplates that you, that the county or, or whatever the tax, the property tax authority body would move forward, and, and they're just not doing it. This is well more than five years delinquent. So another option that we're pursuing is we can, we can create these liens into an executable judgment, then we could levy. It, it kinda would work the same way as a tax sale, but we would still have to cooperate with the sheriff and get them to hold a sheriff's sale. And then the, the city itself could credit bid up to the value of the liens and fines that have been put upon the property. So we would either be able to, you know, if say we had fifteen thousand in fines, we'd be able to bid up to that, and perhaps, I, I have no, I can't make any promises, but perhaps there might be some interest in supplementing that if, say, another buyer were interested in buying, cause we'd like, we'd be very interested in hopefully not getting into the same situation again. If somebody outbid us by fifty bucks and then just neglected the property, that would be not a very good situation. And, and I believe also, and this is pretty recent, and I don't, Dan and I haven't had a lot of time to discuss this, but I do believe we're looking into alternatives of possibly utilizing code enforcement to move the, the cars themselves. But I don't think that has gone very far from a legal standpoint. I don't know if you know much about that, Dan, but I guess, I guess we, our office has started working with code enforcement through those alternatives. I wish I had more specifics. I do know that as far as turning the fines into an, a leviable or executable judgment, city staff, or, or sorry, the city attorney's office has budgeted money to, to serve the owner via publication, which is fairly expensive. And we're just hoping that the judge will accept that service, so that then we can begin trying to take the property back. That's probably our most fruitful and quick avenue. And so that's kind of where we are. I think that the idea is we'll be providing an update until something good happens here, which hopefully as soon as possible. But it's very much on our radar, and we have gotten, I, I think at least the preliminary resources approved for use to, to move forward. So certainly, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them on the legal front.
Is there any, any documentation on the, the condition of the cars in terms of moveability? You know, if, if things proceed and they could be moved to another site?
I, not to my knowledge, but maybe, do you know anything about that, Dan?
No, I don't know if they've, if, you know, they've been assessed from that vantage point.
I'll talk to our code folks.
Yeah.
And see if, if they've looked at that. That probably is the, is more being pursued as a, if, for example, the judge, you know, and with the particular, it's a, the, the concept of, it's, it's always tough to get the court to approve anything other than that, that I actually handed the paperwork saying, we're gonna take your property from you. So, so that probably, anything about moving it is probably more as a backstop, cause I, I think we would like the ability to, to, to take the property with them fixed, cause that just would leave the most options, and that is the, the, the best. But I, but they are looking into the other, the other options as well, and probab, and I believe there's even been some conversation with the adjacent owners, cause I don't think anybody's very happy with the current situation.
Sorry, we're having technical difficulties, I can't seem to find the wifi. Sorry, no visuals.
So picture.
Use your imagination.
Picture a trolley.
Or little streetcars.
They look very sad.
Go back to New Orleans, a streetcar. Just thinking pass a parks ordinance, get more money in parks, move them near the, the trolley barn at Roding Park, so that, that whole area, I mean, they've been there before.
It went through.
They've passed through there, it would make, and they would then become more publicly accessible, so, but that's it, if, if, if.
Is this a very unique situation in the city for us, or is there other totally abandoned, forgotten properties that?
Oh, in the city?
That you're kind of having to go through the same thing?
With, with historical significance, I, I don't believe there are a ton of, of hugely neglected properties. Now, the notion of, of properties that are, that have severe code enforcement issues, severe abatement issues, there are a lot of those. There, and there are many dozens that I, I don't understand why they have not been subject to a tax sale. I have no good understanding of that, our office has no good understanding of that. It would seem that the tax sale would help, and it is, the, the, the whole legal structure contemplates that this is one of the purposes. It's not just to recover monies that are owed to the county, although the city would, would get a good portion of the money in the tax sale as well. But it's also to clear up, and for whatever reason, that's not occurring. Yes, Paul?
So I don't know if this helps or hurts, but when you talk about code enforcement, these are artifacts on a piece of land, these are not buildings. Is that correct? So how, how would you, how would you apply code enforcement to an artifact? Aren't, aren't the codes written towards maintenance of buildings, of structures for human habitation? These are, it's not a building.
Well, they are currently considered buildings.
They are.
They're put on a foundation.
Because they have a foundation, but.
And they're anchored to the foundation, no?
And from a legal standpoint, it doesn't take much to convert a, a, a movable structure to a building. You can have a very, just very poor foundation and convert a cruddy old RV into a, a building technically. And a lot of the reason for this is cause we have different legal treatment for, for folks in their residences and for, for commercial buildings. It's just treated quite a bit differently. But I think the trick of how, of, of trying, I think you're hitting on a good point, which is, that's prob, it's probably a little bit more difficult to apply some sort of code enforcement theory to remove something that is currently considered a building from a property. I think you have to, but, but there are some arguments. I mean, I think that there is concern about these things being broken into. There's no real vested property rights that anyone's hugely concerned about by leaving them there. It's not like there's a person living in them or a tenant trying to do something. But you're right, I think there is the, to do it exactly legally correctly, there would have to be some care taken. And, and you'd have to argue, I think, that, that those buildings, or that these, leaving them as buildings poses a problem. And I think there are some good arguments there, and our, the code enforcement attorneys who are working on it are, are, are looking into that. But, but it sure would be nice if we can get the, the judge to accept a publication by service. It could be in the next few months that we could start the, the levying process to take them back. We just need to get that, that, we, we need to satisfy the due process of taking, of starting the process of taking away someone's property. And you can delay things a fair bit by just being out of the country and unable to be served, unfortunately.
And they're not gonna send you a trip to go deliver papers?
Isn't there something in the code about abandonment?
Abandonment?
You know, if you abandon a property, you're giving up your rights to it? Isn't there something?
There, well, you, in terms of just declaring a, a property abandoned, not, not specifically just that, there, there'd have to be, usually that occurs through the failure to pay taxes or some other thing. But yeah, just merely leaving it in and of itself without another problem, we, we, we can't just take it when you own the property.
I believe the property owner's also been unresponsive too, as well.
Oh, yeah, well, if, if she was responsive, we'd have no, no big problem. Although I guess there was some, at one point, she did hire a real estate agent, and it's unclear if that agent maybe, I doubt this agent is very excited about this. The commission wouldn't be very high, and it's not super marketable, so.
Well, the agent isn't able to reach her anymore either, right?
So I don't know that that relationship still exists, but there, but so I, you know, I, I doubt this person is gonna come and sue us if, if, if there, if the property gets taken back, so. So obviously, we just need the, we just need to get something that would, you know, be legally viable to get a hold of title. And it's disappointing that it's not done via tax sale.
Well, I thought there was something in there about public nuisance and abandonment of property and.
But I don't think that gets you title to the property. You know, we could, we can decide if something's abandoned and is a huge nuisance. Now, I guess there is a con, you could go through a condemnation proceeding, but usually that still is gonna ultimately involve a, a, although you might be able to take some degree of physical possession to actually get it back, you're, you're still gonna have to go through your due process requirements on the owner. But I, I, I feel pretty confident that this is all, that the, that the code staff and our folks are very, are, even though I'm not personally, I'm not really a litigator, but I, I, I believe that this has attracted enough attention that, that efforts are being undertaken, cause we don't want the historic resource to go away.
That needs to be a great addition to, to something like Playland at Roding Park. You know, have a little, little diner out there.
Yeah, and the more, the more political interest and community interest that there is, and folks talking to council members and all of that.
Right, if the constituency gathers and that helps.
Yeah, I still don't, I don't think it's really widely known, the issue yet, but it's creeping up, people are starting to hear more about it.
Somebody out there who restores hot rods and who restores their diner.
Yeah, somebody.
All right, any other questions?
All right, item C, elections. Jason and I have had a conversation. We are rather enjoying our positions on the commission. And if the rest of the commission is immune.
Well, I think your negative ad campaigns are working.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That lodging go back ticket just never really took off. Thanks to these guys, yeah. Roper, roper. So she would kill.
Yeah, she would.
So anyways, we would, we would enjoy keeping them.
I, I would, I would be all in support of that.
Yeah, all right, I guess we need a motion.
I'll move, that we nominate and our, our existing pair of Patrick's chair and Jason's, his vice chair.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The elections are complete.
Thank you.
There you go. I know, they really pour into it. Do you feel a little like Sarah Palin right now?
I keep hearing negative ad campaigns in my head now, you know?
Patrick Boyd says he's chairman, but he doesn't even have a gavel.
We might have to have some fun with that this year.
Go, but where's the gavel? It's just being in Georgia, hearing like the candidates, how much student loan money they owe. Like, what's he getting? Is that?
All right, item number seven, Chair Prudential's report, or is it one? Unscheduled items, members of the commission, any topics to bring up, unscheduled items?
A report, the Lowell Historic Tour had, I counted over two hundred people visit the.
I thought it was me. I didn't see you though. I missed you.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I was, I, I was hiding in the kitchen. I listened to a really bad tour in my house.
Under the hawk.
Under the hawk. There's hawk in the diner. Because of the homeowners patriotism, like, what? But it was, it was well done, lots of people, lots of interest, lots of feedback to do those again. And it's the first home tour in Lowell. And the, two of the houses on Van Ness, both on the register, one on San Pablo and, and my home, were there and so lots of other people offering their, their homes for this. And so it, it started, a whole lot of interest, a lot of people come through. And they had food donated from Richards and they had a signature cocktail for the day, which, you know, if you get a home tour with a signature cocktail, you're, you're, you're doing something, right? So that was, you know, so as a commission, I think supporting activities like this just raises the awareness of historic preservation in the city significant. And as I did mention, I did spend nine days in other cities, but saw more adaptive reuse than I thought had gone on in, in cities that, where I wasn't expecting it. So I saw some unique ways to honor the past by just doing architectural frames of things that used to be on a property. They would literally actually outline a building on a, on a lot and say, this used to be here and tell the story of, of what used to be there. I, and I had only seen that done once before in Pennsylvania, lots of it now in South Carolina and Georgia. And so honoring, honoring the past is, is great, but honoring difficult past is tricky. And so seeing how enslaved persons and the Afro-American population are really taking a great, having a great voice in historic preservation in those cities was significant to me. And it, it just brought to mind what maybe here in Fresno, we need to start paying more attention to in, in historic preservation. There's an entire Chinese section in Columbia, South Carolina, that I had no idea existed and I grew up in, in that area. So that was significant to, to, to see and to, to have ideas about what they're doing in preservation there.
Awesome. Awesome. Anyone else? Where are we on some of our dusty districts waiting for approval surveys? And we had our list that we had made and some of the low hanging fruit that we're gonna start taking care of. Where are we on those?
Chinatown is still at, at the top and I'm in the process of creating a recon survey for the Chinatown area. With, I guess, I guess I've been kept pretty busy despite our lack of HPC meetings. But also factors such as the heat and smoke haven't been ideal for surveying. So my plan is to get those going this fall.
And then how about Armenia Town?
I was gonna say that.
District, where are we on that? Any new news? Any news at all?
Well, we've been, there have been efforts to, to see what the obstacles are and I, there, I've been involved in several meetings. I don't think that I have anything that I can firmly report at this time other than there have been efforts with the developer, the redevelopment agency and everyone to, to find the, to find a path forward that will allow the district to go forward without causing an issue with the proposed development. It seems to be a relatively small set of issues. And I do believe that they're gonna work through them, but we don't, we're still kind of in the same place right now. Certainly, if that development, if the development moves forward and gets a little bit further along and more clarity, then it should remove any of the concerns. But that's, that's where we are right now. But I will say, it's, it's probably every one to two weeks where there's some form of meeting trying to resolve the concerns. And that's all I've got on that. I apologize for the lack of specifics.
I guess as the, you know, purveyors of said report and district, the concern would be that there wouldn't, negotiations wouldn't have, that's the reason why we put this whole thing together. So that those elements essentially protect against negotiations, whatever those may be, of, of either the historic properties and/or adjacent properties. And so that's kind of where we, why we build these things, so that we protect those, those, those sites.
Well, what it.
We'd feel, we'd have a lot more confidence if this was in play and, and approved and then subsequent development, you know, negotiations were coming in after that.
I don't think that there's any, any serious concern that the district will not go forward or that anything that will be done will impact the district in a meaningful way. I think these are technical, legal concerns about how the presence of a district might allow certain challenges to a development that is essentially already approved. But it's, it's concern about opening up for, for technical challenges that, I don't think that there's any, I don't think that there's anyone, the developer or anyone at the city or anybody ultimately thinks that there's gonna be any problem with the district going through or that anything's gonna be incompatible with the district. It's just, I, I guess to make sure that we have a nice district and we ultimately have a nice development. And that's kind of, that's kind of where we are right now. I, I.
That doesn't seem to make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
That doesn't make sense at all.
I just can't, I, I can't, I, I, I'm not comfortable getting into, to specifics. If, if you wanna, any particular request that you'd like to make, any particular question, I can bring it to the powers that be, maybe write a confidential memo to the board or to the commission. But I'm, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable saying anything else in a, at this time in a, in a public forum. Yes?
Let me ask then, if meetings are happening one to two weeks, do you have a sense of a timeline?
I don't. I can just say, I think everyone who's involved is committed to the district. Different thing, yeah, that, I, that's all I can say.
I think that's what leaves us confused. If that's the case, why isn't it moving?
There's a, there's a particular, there's some particular legal concerns that I'd rather not get into in a public forum that, that is the issue with, with moving forward on the district. And I, I'm just not author-, I just can't say anything else. I'm very sorry.
Patrick, am I correct that you once did make a request to, regarding this being placed before the city council? Didn't you write something?
I mean, as.
Right, but, but once it kind of got sort of in this sidetracked way, am I not recalling that you, you asked for information or an update or something?
I can't recall.
Could we ask?
It's been a while.
Could we ask for a confidential synopsis of the, the points of discussion?
I will, I will make that request and.
Is that what we want?
I think so.
So confidential means it's what, it's distributed just to the commission?
Yes.
And I, you know, for myself, I'm not even, I don't know that I object, even if it's distributed just to Patrick.
Yeah, that's true.
And then you will have information to tell us cease and desist until they come along? Or, or we can wake up if there's a problem?
Yeah, the only problem with giving things to Patrick only is it could put him in a difficult position from a Brown Act standpoint. Because then is it, is he gonna, he can't have discussions with all of you legally. Sorry.
I guess I was looking at it from the other.
I would rather, I would rather not, I, I mean, I guess, I guess if everyone was comfortable giving it to Patrick and then Patrick can say, well, I'm happy or I'm not happy, but that, and then he makes the call, you know, I, okay, I, let's, as long as, as long as we then came and, and Patrick, I guess, discussed without saying what was in there, how he felt about giving it to everyone else, but I, I don't, I don't think it really makes any difference whether we just gave it to him.
I was actually trying to avoid any Brown Act.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Problems that if we all knew is that.
I can send things individually to everyone. The Brown Act is, is, is you all having discussions amongst yourself, having a quorum discussing amongst yourselves.
Well, and once we have that information, that starts to happen, I don't know. I mean, we just have to understand we can't do that. It's that simple.
I suppose, I suppose, I mean, so let's walk through the scenarios. If we get the information and for whatever reason, we're all okay with it, then it, you know, it just essentially, it, it, the items kind of dropped on our part until it actually gets passed up to commission. If any of those issues come up and we're not okay with those issues, for whatever reason, then we got a problem. Like, how do we, how do we discuss it? Or, you know, send a letter back? Like, what's that process?
Well, I think that the.
There's ten things that came up and three of them, we are absolutely not okay with.
The, the, well, the commission is in charge of determining districts, at least at the first stage before it goes to council, and in charge of the historical resources. And so you can make direction upon city staff. Now, now that can be overridden by council, of course. But, yeah, I mean, I guess it would be what you would, we would still have to keep any information confidential, but you would be allowed to, to pass whatever motion or, or recommendation expressing in a general way, concerns and, and those probably would be listened to.
Would it be like a closed item?
I don't know how we do closed items in, in HPC. I'll, I'll be honest. I, I will look into that as well.
We've never done one since I've been around.
That's since I've been on.
That's how they call.
There might, I'll look into the process. I, I don't remember anything in the ordinance about it, but maybe there is. So, so let's, let's see what the best, well, you're gonna direct me, I'm not gonna direct you. But I, I could, so I can request the authority to draft a confidential memo and I can also request, I can look into the issue of having a, a closed session. The prob-, there are very narrow grounds for having a closed session. And I don't know, there's consideration of a real estate deal, there's potential litigation, there's personnel issues. I don't, I don't know that any of the Brown Act exceptions would apply. So that kind of leaves us with this weird one-way communication.
Yeah, I mean, especially when we're talking about, you know, an issue that we're dealing with, which is always a public issue. So it seems kind of odd to have a closed session about anything that might come up regarding historic district, which is a public issue.
Sean, I have a question.
Yes.
Would it, would it be helpful if the commission voiced their support to the city council regarding this?
Well, I'm.
That encourage the timeline to move forward?
The commission is welcome to do that.
Or anyone.
I wanna make sure I'm not in an, in any sort of advocacy role, 'cause I'm not, I need to be, although I certainly have opinions about all of this stuff, I'm not allowed to share them. But, but yes, the, the commission could, could publicly state kind of any position it liked, yeah.
Let's go back to the process. If you were to send this confidential memo to each of us individually, we can form an opinion about it, but we can't discuss it amongst ourselves. Is that correct?
You can't discuss it among a quorum.
So two of us can speak, but all of us can't speak?
Right, I mean, and that's why, for example, we can have subcommittees on things that are.
All right, so is that the, we send, send the memo, we establish a subcommittee, you send the memo to the subcommittee? Is that a better way to do this? Instead of sending it to Patrick?
It's hard for me to say what the best way to do it is, but that, that would be acceptable. That, if, if you'd like to form a subcommittee.
Then the subcommittee can.
And I could meet and speak very freely to a subcommittee.
So then the subcommittee, if they wanna go to the city council with some specifics, that would, would that be appropriate?
Yeah, or the subcommittee could create a motion that would, could, could propose a motion that the, although I guess I see what you're saying, how do the people who worked on the committee, well, I guess they would have seen.
Well, we're empowering the subcommittee to speak on our behalf, so.
Yes.
Would it be?
We have kind of an intersection of a policy issue regarding the development and the legal issue of the, of moving forward with the, the district and policy concerns about timing and how those things go together. But I can say, I, with absolute certainty, there's no, the, at least. But I can say, I, with absolute certainty, there's no, the, at least everyone I have talked to says that they support the district, want the district to go forward. And they're not happy about the timing either.
Could we request from staff a timeline of the actions concerning the Old Armenian Town district? From it's the first time that this came over a decade ago to the commission, when it was first established. And then council, this commission's actions on this, including requests for information, could we have a document of the timeline for this to attach to any communication with whoever is, is making these decisions or not making these decisions?
Yeah, you can ask me to prepare a timeline and I'll do that.
Timeline would be great. I mean, something, you know, if everybody's on board for the, it being adopted and, and approved, is there like a six-month deadline that it automatically goes to council? Or, or something of that nature to where a stipulation can be added on that, an item or requested?
Well, there is a, there is a ti-
Talking about a future deadline.
Yeah, there, there's, there is a timeline.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a time after the district is approved by the, the HPC that it's supposed to go to council.
Right.
That has passed already.
And what's the repercussions for that time being passed? Does it have to be resuraveled now? Does it have, do we have to start the process over again?
No, I don't believe that that's the case. I think the, I, I think the concern is, I mean, ultimately it has to be approved by council. And so, I, you know, I mean, any, any interested person can, can try to push to council to get it through. I don't know, but I don't know whether, I mean, I don't wanna speak to what council would or would not do. But I think that, that right now, there are, there's the policy, well, I should back up. I don't know what HPC can do other than ask council to move forward or get information about what is going on. I don't think there are, I, I, I'm not aware of any legal repercussions that would hurt the ability of the district to get ultimately approved. But, but, but other than asking council to go ahead and go forward or getting more information about what's going on, I, I, I don't have anything else I can say at this time. But I can prepare a timeline. I don't believe that the district is in peril of not, legal peril. Of course, it still has to be approved by council.
Coming to the point where we're now educating our third council member on this district because, and, and, and that, that process, because the council person representing this area is usually not aware of, of any, of the history of this. So the timeline might be helpful for that. Council person as well. Also, this is having a detrimental financial effect. This because without the designation as a historic district, property owners here who don't have individually designated properties are not going to be, also be able to access the Mills Act. And that has a detrimental effect. Also, the discussions of cultural entities wanting to locate themselves in Old Armenian Town. They're making the decision to go elsewhere because it's not a designated historic district. And so there are many other places in the city and the county where they can go. And it, it's, it is, the longer it takes, the more of the people who would be significantly impacted by, positively with the designation are dying. And, you know, it's called Old Armenian Town. And those who actually lived in some of the houses that are located there are dying every day and will no longer be there. And so the impact of this, it would be nice to have someone who actually lived there be there when it is designated as a district. And that's not going to be possible very shortly, if not now. And, and so the fact that it's, it's actually a conversation apparently somewhere that no one can say between, is it a district or is, or we, do we, you know, listen to it as a development, seems to be Fresno's ongoing conversation. And, you know, it's, I would headline this as, this is why we can't have nice things. And the lack of information to this commission, I continue to see is amazingly unethical on the part of someone in the city. And no one seems to, when we ask council staff, can you look into this? They seem to get the same response that we do. It's something's happening somewhere we can't seem, quite seem to figure out. And, you know, I, I, I don't know how anyone functions with that level of, of information. This, it's certainly not fair to the people on this commission. And it hasn't been fair to the people who work so hard to make Old Armenian Town come into existence. It's just, it's, it, it's kind of beyond the pale to me.
Yeah, and I just wanna make clear what my role is, is I have to provide attorney-client advice to different facets of the city, which sometimes are, can actually even be privileged from each other, which is sort of unique for an attorney. As far as I know, it only exists as an attorney for a municipal government that has multiple arms. But, so, so the political issue of moving forward or not is, is just not something I'm involved in. I, I'm not advocating on behalf of the city for what position folks and staff or folks in the council are taking. That's a political choice on their part. What I am doing is just providing legal advice to the different folks that I'm saying. But some of it is confidential. But I certainly will convey those thoughts. And I encourage everyone who has thoughts that are in the political realm to, to voice them in the way they see fit as well.
So do we need a motion to form a subcommittee to receive this confidential report?
Yes, if you'd love, yeah.
Do we want such a committee?
Yes.
I'm gonna move that we form a subcommittee consisting of Don, Patrick, and Robin to receive a-
I think I would've put you there.
What's that?
I would've put you on it. I'm not opposed, but-
I've been on other subcommittees. Would you find them?
Sure.
Okay. I believe three, to receive a confidential memo that updates the commission on the status of the Armenian Town district, along with a timeline from its inception to present.
Do we have a second?
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Any other items, commission members? Staff, anything new, unscheduled items?
First, can we approve the minutes for May 21st?
Yes.
Don't wanna leave without getting some-
Thank you very much.
I almost let that go, yes.
My apologies.
All right, we needed, because Jase wasn't here, we didn't have a forum for May's meeting minutes. So back to item two B, the approval of May meeting minutes from 2018. Comments or corrections to May's meeting minutes? Hearing none, may I entertain a motion to approve?
I'm moving approve.
Add a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Thank you for the reminder. Back down to unscheduled items. Staff, anything else?
Just real quick, I've been doing some HPC training outreach to figure out how we're gonna fit that in this year. I've reached out to the OHP and they're still trying to figure out their budget for workshops for this season. So I'll stay posted for any scheduled workshops they're gonna have, as well as if they'll be able to come down here for a meeting. I've also reached out to another, a group recommended by OHP called CAMP. You might know about them. Commission Assistance and Mentoring Program, specifically geared toward preservation commissions. And I'm waiting to hear on their pricing. We're moving forward and hoping we can set up some training for y'all soon as it's a CLG requirement. I kind, I wanted to briefly get an idea of if the commission had any specific topics or areas that they felt would be useful for them moving forward or that they were interested in, in learning more about. For example, this, this CAMP program, they have topics of design review, envisioning infill design and standards and guidelines. There's also a section on procedures and processes, including legal basics, legal ethics, meeting procedures. Let's see. Another group of topics is essential strategies. And this includes preservation, planning for local commissions, identifying and designating historic resources, preservation incentives and benefits, building public support, mid-century resources for local commissions. There are also options of hands-on workshops, such as design review exercises. That's all they have here. I know that we can also request a certain area that we're interested in learning more about or refining.
I think one, one thing that sinks in even to today is Fresno has a very big potential of adaptive reuse. It is something that is heating up, it is here, it is going to happen. So I think getting our, ourselves geared in that would be extremely beneficial cuz, you know, we're always a few years behind, they say here in Fresno, but I think we're-
Like thirty?
Yeah. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna need to get there. And I think getting some wisdom on that, it's gonna be extremely helpful for this commission.
I'll note that, that'll be helpful.
That and the, something on the mid-century modern, I think, is also important. It's, we're all, we all know about the sort of the styles, but the historic styles. I think mid-mod is something that is loosely thrown around. I think it would be great if we could maybe learn a little bit more about what to look for as commissioners.
Especially because I believe we have a district on our list of, you know, the mid-century modern element there. So it'd be great to go into that with a little bit of horsepower.
Some guidance on engaging, being more inclusive in the history of properties that we work with? And how does this, how does a historic preservation commission be an inclusive commission?
Oh, inclusive designation or certain?
Inclusive designation. So that we don't, you know, have an all-white historic, local historic register.
Great. Anything else? Sounds good.
Anything else, Dan? Open it up to the general public. Any unscheduled items you guys wanna bring up? All right. Thank you very much for being here. That concludes this meeting. Our next one is on September 24th. Thank you.
You gonna go to your gala victory ball now?